This is Resolution 22-34 regarding the use of TDEC ARPA funding to the Bonnet Colyles Utility District and the Water Authority of Dixon County. There are several sponsors, but consistent with our rules, the first two are considered the primary sponsors. That's Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Collins. Clark is entering the discussion and debate on this issue. Does any commissioner wish to disclose conflict of interest in regards to Resolution 22-34? We appreciate all the folks in the audience here tonight. We've given a lot of opportunity for you guys to speak, and we appreciate all the comments that you made. I can assure you that people on this side of this banister will conduct themselves politely and professionally as we debate this. As we ask those in attendance to be quiet, refrain from conversation and comment, so we can conduct this business. If not, I'm going to have to ask you to leave. Commissioner Clark, Collins, you're the sponsors of record. Would you like to speak as that?
The, uh...I've been involved in this since 2002. Hooking those three schools to a public utility has been a conversation among this body, a pretty intense conversation at times for at least 12 years. The thought has always been to try to do it with non-property tax money, not free money, but non-property tax money. What we have right here is two of those stars lining up. The first star is the Water Authority has capacity, and the second star is we have money. And the money, somehow or another, in the last month to five, six weeks, it turned into a leak. For the last 14 months, we've been having meetings about this money, and every meeting started with hooking three schools up, and nobody opposed it. There was no mention of Centerville's dire leak problem through all that time, and then all of a sudden, all the money was going to Centerville, and that motion would, that resolution would have ended down to $1.2 million. That leaves the two and a half left right here. The, exists a need to discontinue use of that package plan. That doesn't mean that it's going to fail tomorrow, but we have this non-taxpayer money That permit has to be renewed every five years, and like everything else, the EPA, the environmental permits get a little more stringent every five years. We don't know what it's going to cost when it does tear it up, but it will have to be replaced. Just because we're looking a little further down the road in five or six years, I don't think that's a bad thing. I think it's great. And since I came in here and sat down almost 20 years ago, there's been an overwhelming outcry from the public and the people that send me down here to lay the tracks for residential and commercial growths at the northeast end of the county, and have done that at every opportunity. This is just that. There's been comments that the school board hasn't asked for this. The school board came into the budget process, the director did, and asked for $750,000 for the purposes of assisting in hooking those schools to a sewer line. I would think anybody would want the school system out of the sewer business. Three of the eight schools are on it. I just, that's the reason I'm supporting this, is I think it'd be a great thing if that's just one more thing the director didn't have to worry about at four o'clock in the morning, when that person's trying to decide whether or not to bust it, she could run comfortably. At least they don't have to worry about the package plan. They did ask for the $750,000 with the intent to look onto the school system, I mean the sewer system. My position in this is to get the director of school out of the sewer business. We have the money, and the Water Authority of Dixon has the capacity. I'm urging you to vote for it.
Commissioner Collins?
In 2004, we as a county, represented by our commission, went to the Water Authority of Dixon to help build a new high school. They agreed. We put in the land, paid for it, and in that process, we entered an agreement with them to form a committee to meet with the Water Authority of Dixon County. It was to be the mayor, the commissioner, and someone who was a customer. We never did that. We never formed a committee, and we never met with them. So if we were a committee, or our body, and we had asked somebody to form a committee to speak on behalf of itself, we would expect you to be there. If not, then we would make the decision for you, based off of this. We entered an agreement over sewer, what should be done. So the decisions that were made, were made without us, because we never showed up. It's been stated tonight that we need to decide. Well, our mayor, Chairman Nash, has made a statement that we need to own our own sewer. I agree. If we want to be in control, then we have our own sewer system. But we just heard the figure just a minute ago, it was $954,000 to go from stoplight at Highway 147 to the top of the hill, and we're not finished. We own that. It's in the ground, and we own it. Remember, we own that on 46. That's ours, not the Water Authority of Dixon. The cost for three schools is now $2.5 million for a short run from 46 to the schools, no further. That's today's cost, and everything is going up. It's been stated that we need to use this money and not put in sewer line that we don't own. Well, that's what we're doing. We're putting in sewer line we own, that we control. Ladies and gentlemen, if we don't take advantage of the money that's there to put in for the sewer, just to the school, we're not talking about hooking every house up that's up and down there. That's not an option. $2.5 million today, and a gentleman just stated on what the cost was of putting in the sewer system ourselves, the cost for the county will be astronomical to put this in, and it will not be that five-mile radius around that red light that pays for it. It's going to be everybody. And I'd like to go back to that one thought. If we put our own sewer system in, where's it going to go? Is it going in Rickley? Is it going in Bonnet? Or is it going to go in the middle of Lyles? Where's it going to go? What creek is it going to run into there? That water, that treatment has to go somewhere. So tonight, what we're doing is we are looking down the road. We're taking advantage of the money that's given us to put the sewer line in from 46 to the three schools. We own it, and if later on, we decide we no longer want to pay the Water Authority of Dixon, the money to handle the waste that we put in, or that we're putting out, and we build our own, and we go right up to the county line and cut the bow off on the lines that we own, and we take care of our own sewer. But as where we stand, where we stand tonight, looking down the road, this is the best thing that we have. We're not, we're not talking about dumping sewer into Lake Creek tonight. We're talking about taking advantage of $2.5 million and putting in a line that serves a purpose that we all agree that we need, whether it's 10 years from now or 20. But like I said, you go and walk the distance, drive the distance from the spot, from the turn signal, stoplight, to the top of the hill, and know that's a million dollars. And you're asking us to pass that on to everybody that lives in Perry County, down near Perry County, near Murray County, up towards Humphreys County, in our own county. We're going to tell them that, hey, we're going to just, we're going to look at this later on, when it's going to cost us some astronomical money, and we don't even know then if we can afford to do it. The reason that Perry doesn't have sewer now, that they, they can't afford to do it. They can't afford to take care of their own. Go ask them. They gave it to the Water Authority of Dixon, and then paid them money to take it, because there are more coram on up there. They could not handle their own. We're talking about tying three schools up. We're not talking about dumping in Lake Creek, which I'm all against that. I don't want sewer anywhere. But tonight, we have an opportunity to fix a problem, own the equipment that we're putting in, and when the time comes, we'll build our own plant, if that's what everybody in the county wants to do, and then we can figure out what community goes in and whose creek it dumps in. Ladies and gentlemen, this is, this has nothing to do with the lot that's been said here tonight. We're taking care of a need that has been discussed a long time before the resolution had come up a month ago. The water leaks and center were never part of it. It was taking care of the school system. So I am...
See, the commissioner wishes to speak. See Resolution 22-34? Commissioner Collins?
Yes, I just have a question. I know we had a committee, as Commissioner Clark discussed, for the past 13 months, and everyone, we never came up with a resolution or an idea, instead of ideas we're speaking up that we could use for. I know that when we were at a briefing of the outgoing incoming administration and commissioners, we were discussing, you know, getting briefed on these different proposals, and with one November deadline, remember Commissioner Moore was, you know, new to the system, saying, you know, how can we not have a special meeting here in the next few days so we can meet all the deadlines necessary to get to one November? And everybody realized that was a pretty impossible task. So kind of the consensus was that the Centerville project is something that we could get passed and get done and use the funds for Pittman County, and not jeopardize losing $2.5 million, even though, you know, being a conservative, like I said, money not spent, but I think we'd be one of the few counties that rejected it, that could get a certificate of appreciation from, you know, like March if you get us one. But I think our best bet is to go with the Centerville project, where we could use the money, and I think we're going to wind up losing $2.5 million if what we're going to do. Thank you.
Commissioner Jordan?
I agree with Wally on that. I'm going to miss the vote, but to point to some folks as well, this resolution is not clear, and it's not, in some cases, active. And I'd like to offer amendment to correct that.
Okay?
Okay. And, pass it around if you would.
Let me read this?
I'll read it if you ever do.
Okay, please.
I just want you to add it, so... First Amendment addresses the one, two, three, fourth paragraph, whereas, currently it says Hickman County, Tennessee wishes to collaborate with the following utility providers, one Bonnet Colyles, two Water Authority of Dixon. It doesn't clarify what you are wanting to collaborate with. To clarify that, I'd like to replace that language with, whereas Hickman County, Tennessee wishes, has everybody got one? Has everybody got one? My plane? Okay. Wishes to enter their project with the Bonnet Colyles Utility District and the Water Authority of Dixon to connect to the East Hickman Elementary Intermediate and Middle School, the Water Authority of Dixon's existing wastewater collection system, which has pumping in four main facilities along Howard Street. That clarifies what we're asking them to do, what this resolution is asking for today, put a limit on it. That's what, this is what is desired by this resolution, and as it is written. And what we're going to collaborate with. So this is just part of the clear case.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jordan. Is there a second?
Second by Commissioner Chester to substitute in its entirety the wording that exists in the fourth paragraph with this new wording. Any discussion on the motion to amend the resolution?
Roll call vote.
Paul Calacott?
Yes.
Clay Chester?
Yes.
Danny Clark?
No.
Todd Collins?
No.
Steve Janakis?
Yes.
Dusty Jordan?
Yes.
Ron Mayberry?
Yes.
Wally McNair?
Yes.
Carl Moore?
Yes.
Ricky Murray?
No.
Keith Nash?
Yes.
David Pickard?
Yes.
Clay Thompson?
No.
Matthew Barrio. We have nine yes and five no.
Nine yes, five no. Does any commissioner wish to change his vote?
Nine yes, five no.
The resolution is amended?
You've got a couple more if you would like me to proceed with them.
Go ahead, Commissioner Jordan.
Here it is, down. It currently reads, there exists a need to discontinue the use of Hickman County Board of Education's small wastewater system, which serves East Hickman Elementary Intermediate School and Middle School, due to age and inefficiency. The new verbiage would say there exists a desire. There's not a need right now to do that. There exists a desire to discontinue, I'm sorry, I lost the place, the use of Hickman County Board of Education's small wastewater system, which serves Hickman County, East Hickman Elementary Intermediate and Middle School. Period. It says, the original says, due to age and inefficiency. We've heard from TDEC that they're not...
Commissioner Jordan, listen to this. Let's make sure we get a second, and then we can have whatever discussion...
I want to finish.
Second by Commissioner Janakis. Any discussion? Sorry, Commissioner Jordan, you can continue.
I just, I got it out there. It clears it up, read, and then we've heard from TDEC that it's not efficient, it is efficient according to the force that we get. So I'd like to add that in place of, whereas I just mentioned.
Commissioner, I have a motion to amend paragraph six in its entirety. Motion by Commissioner Jordan, second by Commissioner Janakis. Any other discussion?
Period. Roll call vote.
Paul Calacott?
Yes.
Clay Chester?
Yes.
Danny Clark?
Yes.
Todd Collins?
Yes.
Steve Janakis?
Yes.
Dusty Jordan?
Yes.
Ron Mayberry?
Yes.
Wally McNair?
Yes.
Carl Moore?
No.
Ricky Murray?
Yes.
Keith Nash?
Yes.
David Pickard?
No.
Clay Thompson?
No.
Matthew Barrio?
No.
Ten yes, four no.
Ten yes, four no. Amendment number two approved. Let's let them call it. Commissioner Jordan?
I have one more. Currently reads, Grand Hickman County Board of Education wishes to connect the East Hickman Schools with Water Authority of Dixon wastewater collection system in order to improve wastewater services for the three schools, serving approximately 1,000 students, modernize outdated wastewater facilities, and achieve compliance with local state and federal drinking water requirements, as per amendment number... Replacement, the amendment reads, whereas the Hickman County Board of Education wishes to connect East Hickman Schools with Water Authority of Dixon's existing wastewater collection system in order to improve wastewater services for the three schools, serving approximately 1,000 students, modernize wastewater facilities, and maintain compliance with local state federal drinking water. You see why I added existing and maintain compliance and, and update...
I have a motion by Commissioner Jordan to replace paragraph seven with the verbiage that's been applied. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Calacott. Any discussion on amendment number three? Period. Roll call vote.
Paul Calacott?
Yes.
Clay Chester?
Yes.
Danny Clark?
No.
Todd Collins?
Yes.
Steve Janakis?
Yes.
Dusty Jordan?
Yes.
Ron Mayberry?
Yes.
Wally McNair?
Yes.
Carl Moore?
Yes.
Ricky Murray?
No.
Keith Nash?
Yes.
David Pickard?
No.
Clay Thompson?
No.
Matthew Barrio?
No.
We have nine yes and five no.
Nine yes, five no. Does any commissioner wish to change his vote? Nine yes, five no. Anything else? Commissioner Jordan?
I just want to encourage and state that this has been planned and working on since 2002, I think, as one of the sponsors said. My 10 years on the county commission previous, I don't recall any urgent discussions that I have heard from various people that's at point of the wastewater system out there is a point failure, imminent failure. We hear from TDEC that it's not, and some examples that the folks, that's folk use are good and valid. We do have a situation with, with the town of Centerville. We serve the county as well, so I will be voting no on this resolution.
Commissioner Calacott?
Well, the way the resolution's written, the problem that I have with it is really just, I think it needs a little bit more teeth in holding Dixon Water Authority accountable what we need to put us in this money over. The problem that I have is that we're going to turn it over to them, it's going out of county, and for the last couple of years, we've heard that they're at 8% capacity. This might have been a drift meeting that I missed, and I don't like the idea of us sending them more sewer if they have capacity problems. The way that Dixon is growing, especially in the south, and we're going to be sending more sewer to them, that's the first thing. The second problem that I have with the resolution is, things that I was in for the last year, year and a half, TDEC focused on need, and I think we're going to have a hard time selling the need. They made it very clear that if we tried to use their grant money for growth to inspire existing citizens, but it was going to be used for growth, then it was not going to get approved. It's that bothers me. I would hate for us to pass this, and then TDEC shoots it down, and then we have cost our county $2.8 million. And they did make it clear that no infrastructure improvements were going to be allowed for entities that were already at max capacity, and I might have to let the sponsor speak to that, the capacity issue, before I get to my other point, because I might have missed something on the capacity, or the maintenance that I missed, so there's, I'll yield temporarily if somebody decides to the capacity issue.
Commissioner Calacott, build the floor to anyone who wants to address the capacity issue. Commissioner Clark?
The amount of water that goes into those three schools, they calculated a use, and that use is a little under 2% of the gum branch pump that's in question. So they felt comfortable with it, because the amount of water that's bought by those three schools, projecting what is going to have outflow, that there's not an issue with the amount coming out of the schools. One other thing that may help on this point, too, is we're not going to give them any money. We're going to build a sewer line. They're not building it, we are. We will engineer that sewer line, we will hire contractors, and we will install that sewer line the way we did the other two that are already up there, so we won't be mailing them a check for $2.5.
It was my understanding that this grant money had to be sent through our Water Authority. Am I correct on that?
The Water Authority will operate it after we build it. They have to, we can operate it. We can build it, we can operate it. That, that, that's my understanding from the Water Authority, that we will be, we will be engineering and building the land. Their deal is, they will have oversight of that, because they're going to be the ones operating it. We will handle the construction, we're not going to be mailing them money for them.
I have to call Rick.
Yes, you do.
Okay. Whether we build it or not, we're going to have to work underneath the grant. We're still, we're still, as it says, working with the Dixon Water Authority. And back to the original meetings, and what TDEC said they were going to approve, I think that the gum branch, that pump, we need to make sure that they are under capacity. That's one thing that was made clear in those meetings, and that bothers me, because if they were not having a capacity problem, they never would have asked for another permit to build another sewer plant. And so, I believe, just by that logic tells me that they know they have a problem or a potential problem. And I've got an amendment, in case you might want to get ready.
Is it like this, you write it?
No. The amendment is this, to ensure upgrades that are made to the Water Authority of Dixon County System, specifically the gum branch sewer pump station and East Hickman High School sewer pump station, to ensure capacity. Because the last thing I want is for us to send them more sewer that they can't handle.
I'm sorry. Can I have that?
Hey, I gotta have my notes back when you get done.
I'll go like a cut.
Keep it coming, you shithead.
We are ready. Resolution 34, and determine where you would like for that to be, taking different places. Please, while Commissioner, excuse me, while the clerk is... While Commissioner, excuse me, while the clerk is taking a copy. The next time he leaves, there's a musical interlude, and I understand that Sheriff Kraft will be the opening act.
Let's put it, let's put it number five there. Maybe it's a fifth. Whereas. Put it right after the hand.
So, you want that to be a, a new paragraph five, or paragraph six?
Create that one.
So, it'd be, it would be paragraph six?
Yeah.
And this, and that new paragraph six, everything else would shift down. Just help me out on that first little bit of wording. Whereas?
This resolution, whereas, this will, this will ensure upgrades, and then go from there if he has the.
Whereas, this will ensure upgrades are made to the Water Authority Dixon County System, specifically the gum branch road sewer pump station and East Hickman High School sewer pump station to ensure capacity. Have a motion by Commissioner Callicott. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Call on Callicott?
Yes.
Clay Chester?
Yes.
Danny Clark?
No.
Todd Collins?
No.
Steve Janakis?
Yes.
Dusty Jordan?
Yes.
Ron Mayberry?
Yes.
Wiley McNair?
Yes.
Carl Moore?
No.
Ricky Murray?
No.
Keith Nash?
Yes.
Devin Pickard?
No.
Wayne Thompson?
No.
Matthew Morgen? Seven to seven?
Seven yes, seven no.
Seven yes, seven no. Does any commissioner wish to change her vote? The amendment fails for a lack of majority. Commissioner Callicott, you still have a vote?
Okay, we've got one more. This is going to go after the last, whereas, on the first page. It's going to read, this resolution does not approve or consent to the permitting construction of a new wastewater treatment facility in Hickman County to process wastewater from Dixon and Williamson Counties and discharge into Lit Creek and the Duck River. And that is to send a message that we are not, don't take this as sending y'all sewer back down to us.
Do you have that in a written form? So, let's perhaps start with.
You're up, Sheriff.
You're the second.
You better hurry up, man.
The amendment reads, this resolution does not approve or consent to the permitting and construction of a new wastewater treatment facility in East Hickman County to process wastewater from Dixon and Williamson Counties and discharge into Lit Creek or the Duck River. It has, that's a, a motion that has been put forth as an amendment, it's been seconded. Any discussion on that amendment? Commissioner Morgen?
They have to get permission from us to build up my project.
I, I, we have to meet.
Yeah, I just hope everyone can answer. I just think they need to get a permit from us.
No, they don't. He goes through TDEC. But I, I don't want them, when we give them more sewer lines, them to take that as, you know, because I'd say that when they have to face that public hearing, is that, is that their, their first thing they're going to say is, well, they keep building sewer lines and sending a sewer, but they, but they don't want, they don't want to have to deal with it. And that's, that's, that's what I, that's the message that I want. We're going to do this. That's, that's what I want them to know, is that, hey, because, no, you're right. I mean, it gets, they can come right in, and, but that, that public hearing, I'd say that'd be the picture they would, that they would send. I mean, as you can tell from my amendments, I don't want to send them anymore sewer.
Any other discussion on that? Vote, that motion to amend? Roll call vote. Call on Callicott?
Yes.
Clay Chester?
Yes.
Danny Clark?
No.
Todd Collins?
Yes.
Steve Janakis?
Yes.
Dusty Jordan?
Yes.
Ron Mayberry?
Yes.
Wiley McNair?
Yes.
Carl Moore?
Yes.
Ricky Murray?
Yes.
Keith Nash?
Yes.
Devin Pickard?
Yes.
Wayne Thompson?
No.
Matthew Morgen?
Yes.
Eleven yes, three no. Does any commissioner wish to change her vote?
Okay, one more thing, one more. My first amendment did not pass. Wanted to be heard that this is not a slam dunk on getting this money approved, because that past issue, no issues. I hope I'm wrong on that. Because of that, because of that right there, I'm a no vote on 2234.
Any other discussion on resolution 2234? Commissioner Chester?
One of the things that concerned this body so much with the first resolution, to the, to the point that we even didn't vote on it that night, and we called a special meeting, was that there was no MOU in place specifying what the work to be completed was. And we don't have one of those with, with this as of now, and so, upon the recommendation of our county attorney, I would like to make a motion to amend section three under the narrow, now therefore. And this amendment doesn't change what we're, we're trying to do. It's just going to tie this number of figures to where we're getting that from. And since we don't have an MOU, it's going to tie it to this document that was given to the best, the best we've got. So, my motion is to amend section three, which says the total project cost is 336930812. And at that point, I would like to add the following, as provided in the proposal submitted by WADC, which is attached here to as exhibit A, which will be this document right here.
So, the change would be in paragraph threes. It would read, the total cost, project cost is to, is 3 million 369,308 dollars 12 cents. As provided in the proposal submitted by the Water Authority Dixon County, which is attached here to exhibit A. Period. The local matching portion of 561,55135, or 20% will be provided by funds from Hickman County's ARP allocation. That is the motion by Commissioner Chester. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion? Commissioner Collins? Excuse me, come to your card.
The, the reason there's not a memorandum of understanding on this one is, there, there's, there's not a need for one. We're not giving them any money to understand what it is they, they're going to do with it. Unlike the town central, we just handed them the money. That's, that's the reason that there's not a memorandum of understanding, that there's nothing to understand. And if the sewer line is completed, they will accept the sewer.
Any other discussion on the motion to amend? Scene under, roll call vote. Call on Callicott?
Yes.
Clay Chester?
Yes.
Danny Clark?
No.
Todd Collins?
Yes.
Steve Janakis?
Yes.
Dusty Jordan?
Yes.
Ron Mayberry?
Yes.
Wiley McNair?
Yes.
Carl Moore?
Yes.
Ricky Murray?
Yes.
Keith Nash?
Yes.
Devin Pickard?
Yes.
Wayne Thompson?
No.
Matthew Morgen?
Yeah.
Twelve yes, two no. Twelve yes, two no. Does any commissioner wish to change her vote? The amendment is approved. You have before you resolution 2234 as amended. Any other discussion? I'm sorry, I, I saw Commissioner Jordan's hand first, and I think I saw Commissioner Collins' hand. So, I'm going, I'm going to go with one by Paul Flashen first. Mr. Jordan?
Uh, just to reiterate some things that have been said tonight, we have an imminent situation with the town central and the community that serves with water, water leaks, inefficiency. We don't have an imminent situation of imminent failure with schools. Now, this is being, the way this reads, this is, is particularly, if not only for the schools. Is that correct? Is that what I'm understanding? And I have, I have a question, and when the chairman asked for conflicts at the beginning of this discussion, somebody's affiliate was affiliating with school system, not having to declare a conflict. I'll ask that on the day. The short answer is, I can't answer your question about it. And I'm not dodging the question. I don't know the accuracy of your question. But when it, when it started out, it didn't look like it did now. Well, I guess I should refer the question back to the chairman. Do we need a conflict statement from anyone affiliated directly or indirectly with the school system, because this is primarily for the school system?
How do you view anybody who's angry? Commissioner Collins?
In, in the past, to answer that question, it, it only dealt with our pay, and not with what the school said. If it directly affected us or the money we made the statement for budget time of that, or how to make that statement. In the past, TDEC clarified that a year ago at one time, that it only had to do with if I would vote for something that would directly affect my salary.
They only see tax, not TDEC.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, thanks.
That's how Commissioner Thomas's hand.
He just said what I was going to say.
But I, the floor is always open. If, if the point, if a commissioner wishes to declare, declare a conflict, certainly can do that.
I'd answer my question. I took that floor. It said, we have an imminent problem, and we have one that's not so imminent, and we also have, the way I understand, the money has to be used by owner operator of a wastewater water, or torn drain water system. So, to what Commissioner Callicott said, I don't think this thing can be approved if it, if it adds to your.
Commissioner Moore?
All right, a couple of things. I was trying to figure out how much to say, because I've made several notes, but a lot of things have already been said. So, I'm trying to figure out how to just make this succinct. So, when I, that's the best way to spend four million dollars, federal funds that's in the bank right now. I'm looking at how we can use this money to touch and impact the most people in the county. I'm all about spreading resources around that has some wider reach. I also look at things in the macro, but not necessarily micro. And there are three things that are important. So, first, I feel good about giving Center under 1.2 million to help with their water projects. Devin and I talked to Mayor Jacobs, and Mayor feels good about it, too. But I just have to say this. It wasn't just a few hours ago. Mayor Jacobs said, Carla, I do not have 51% water leaks. And I'm going to tell you, Carla, I'm not coming to the media tonight, but I'm going to tell you, I don't know where that came from. I spent the entire last year working on sewer. Devin was in there, we, uh, meet you at mayor. He's literally saying, this is the end today. Even seeing that headline on the Hickman County Times, he said, Carla, I find out about the water leaks, I got a phone call saying I'm supposed to take this money. My focus was on sewer. So, all this heat and energy that he's receiving about the work that needs to be done, he's like, there is an acceptable amount of leakage in anyone's system. But, but I don't know what this is. And I have a TDEC person telling me, no, you spent all of 2022 working on getting your sewer together. They did. And then all of a sudden, I get a phone call at the top of the week, one week, you're getting 3 million dollars. What? You have to fix your water leaks. TDEC told him to say, I, so, so where I'm going with this is, I, I'm not so sure what everyone wants to believe. Everyone has a TDEC connect. I had one yesterday. What's today? Basically, my connect was TDEC. She's head over managing the water grant program. And I asked her point blank on the phone, her ears, I mean, my ears to her, I said, can two entities be in partnership and tap into these funds? Will we be somehow refused from making that happen? Or will we also then not be able to receive any future funds? Would it not make us eligible for future funds? She says no to both of those. She no, Carla. There's no way that we, that we would deny regional partnerships in a project. Two, there's no way that we would keep you from being available for eligible for future funding if you're in a regional or partnership project. And three, please let everyone know, there's not a pot of gold. There's not a limitless pot of gold here. Everyone's thinking there's going to be this wild money available. Again, Carla, I can't tell you how much win or lose it may be. I don't know when. So, if you've got money now, you need to use whatever you have now. And yes, we know that there's a competitive rate coming, but we're all talking about another wave next year. She's like, you need to make your decisions now. And so, so I, so I'm going on what she's telling me. That, no, I don't feel like we're going to lose this money because we partner with another entity to, for a project, to get a project done, because they understand we have nowhere to go for sewer, which makes, brings me to my second point. So, one, so I feel good about giving Center money to help with their water projects. Again, the mayor feels good about it, too. And by the way, our 1.2 adds to his TDEC money that he's received, which was almost 1 million. Almost 1 billion, he gave him another. And he's also supportive of us to spread it out if we want to or need to, if that's what I desire. Now, we live in the city, but we have a countywide responsibility, too. Two, I feel good about giving Bonacqualows 300,000. Two, I feel good about giving Bonacqua Laos three hundred thousand dollars for their asset management programs. It gives them something to work with, um, to upgrade and make whatever capital investments they need, uh, help with in their future planning. Because they're gonna need a plan too, because change is coming. Yo, you can't dodge a change. It's gonna come. You gotta prepare for it. My business mentors taught me a long time ago, you either change by design, or you change by disaster. No one wants to be scrambled behind the eight ball because of poor planning. And I swear I'm right behind the eight ball. Three. So now there's two hundred, there's two point five million left. So when I learned that what it would take to build a tiny three schools in a sewer, it would take the two point five million. So as you all know, I'm a fierce researcher. When I talk about, when I say Google calls, library books reading, and, um, online searches. So my Hickman County Times subscription comes with online access to archives. I found thirteen articles from Hickman County, and thirteen articles dating back to March twenty-twenty-one that mentioned the desire of getting the schools on sewer and having Water Authority do it. You know, all the way back to March twenty-twenty-one, one, here they are, highlighted. Every one of these other articles that mention the schools wanted to be on sewer. And all the way back to when I got home. And some of these quoted people, members of the Board of Education, teachers, citizens, this year. Many people have been talking about this for a year, getting this for mayors, getting the schools on sewer. Oh, so, so this sewer thing with the schools is not a new idea or a new concept. Here they have articles about getting those schools off the package plant onto the sewer. So again, let me back up a share, and I too come from a corporate, thirty-year corporate background. I too operate from a business mind. My business department last year had annual revenue of seven point seven billion dollars. And that was the part I was over. So I understand making big decisions. And I make decisions without a lot of emotion, so I can keep my head clear. So I can keep my head clear and see what, what makes the best sense. Um, and I also process decisions and solutions with vision in mind. So, um, so let's say this package plant does, we've got ten, fifteen years on it. Well, there's money on the table now that we can provide a permanent solution. Now, in my research and all the calls that I've made and talked to people, I've learned that a new sewer can last up for fifty years. So why accept ten to fifteen years when you can get fifty? And that fifty-year solution would be paid for with money that's already in the bank. And we're talking non-property tax money. Now, who could put this in? The only people who could put it in is the Water Authority. It's a monopoly. Most utilities are. I worked thirty years with a monopoly. Had to get HBO to the house. The only way you can get HBO on your TV is through the field. They didn't like us, and we barely liked them. But we had to try in-house, and we had to work together through that. I mean, I wish we had another way to get it tied up without the Water Authority, but we don't. There's some way to get it done. I mean, I don't necessarily like the way they do business. They didn't do right by us with that permit. And I don't want them building anything behind our backs and processing waste that's, uh, anyone else's sewer, even connected to Lick Creek. I said it before, and I say it again, this is also larger than Lick Creek. We should have our own thirty, forty-year strategic plan, growth plan, and take charge of our own future. And I'm doing what I can to ensure that we take that power back. We need our own plan. So I close with this. I believe that two things can be true at the same time, y'all. I can want those kids or schools to have their own sewer, secured with sewer, and I can work to save and support Lick Creek. It's not a zero-sum game. We don't know exactly what the future holds, but I choose to see the future with confident expectancy. I believe wherever we go, I want y'all to know this about me. I believe that when you move with good intentions, good things happen. And that's an extension of my faith. So I approach our future with good thoughts, with hope and optimism. And for me, that's faith over fear. Thank you.
Twenty-two thirty-four as amended. Is there any more discussion? Uh, I've seen a couple more hands. Um, I'm sorry if I'm catching them out of order. Commissioner Morgan?
Hi, oh, wait.
I'm sorry.
You got a bunch more. Commissioner Wally?
Yes, um, I was gonna say, I think I'm probably all on here to just not have a T-DAC connect. I'm sorry about that. I couldn't speak from my, my thoughts, so I didn't reach out to anybody. But that means that every one of the sponsors can answer. As, uh, my comments earlier, Commissioner Callicott, Mr. Jordan. Has anyone assured us that this is twenty-four October? We're five days, five business days away from the end of the month, or the one November deadline. Has anybody assured you that if we pass this resolution, that T-DAC would approve us to do this by November?
Well, again, my connect did not say you will be approved on this day. She just says you need to get it in by November first. Is that what you're asking?
Well, yes, part of it, part of what's been going, excuse me, part of what's been going on in the past thirteen months, as we're told, that this is the discussion, that we want the T-DAC firm to approve. And nothing ever came of it until this deadline. A lot of what was discussed was, we had to have, um, engineering things done, we had to have all of it, all our T's crossed and I's dotted by one November. And my question is, if anybody assured us that if we passed this, that we would be okay on November to move forward?
Commissioner Clark, you trying to answer that question? You just got...
Well, just to make it clarify a little bit, um, all the engineering and stuff doesn't have to be in by November one, just the intent. That's, that's pretty, that's many.
If that's not the relevant question.
We, our intent is to do this, that'll be no problem to get that in by November one.
So my question, why didn't we do this thirteen months ago? On November?
I don't know. I can't speak to why we didn't do it thirteen months ago. Uh, for one thing, T-DAC and, and the Martha money, they changed the rules for the first eight months of it, almost every month. I don't know what we should do with it. Martha finally cleaned us up and said, we claimed loss of any, uh, revenue, you can do anything you want to with it. If it had a venture that sang going up on the bridge on Highway seven, this would have been done six or eight months before.
Next in I saw was Commissioner Deanakis. Yes, I, I won't get there, I promise.
So I've got several things to say. Um, I'm one of several commissioners that relate to this discussion regarding the use of this grant. The first meeting we had, as far as newly elected officials occurred and laid off. And we met two other times since, and one was a regular meeting and then a special meeting. Um, and if you were at the, the special meeting, there were varying, um, discussions, uh, or, or, uh, agreements on what took place in those prior community meetings. This led me to, to go to the grant manual to try to find the truth. Because with, with this grant, that's what they're going to use as, as, as a, as a point of reference. And there's two issues that I found. One is with the intent of the grant with this resolution, and then the overall financial obligations and risks that we have on account. So the intent of the grant, there's fifty-three pages in the grant manual. Page four, which is the first page, it states goals and priorities. There's three of them. Protect and promote human health and safety and improve the quality of Tennessee's water by supporting drinking water, wastewater systems, and significant non-compliance to work towards and achieve compliance. The second one was to improve the technical managerial and financial capabilities of small disadvantaged or underserved water infrastructure systems. Underserved water infrastructure system. And the third was to address critical water infrastructure needs across the state. Page seven of, of this manual says, according to the Treasury's final rule, ARP eligible activities to be funded by non-competitive SWIG, uh, program are necessary investments in water, wastewater, or stormwater infrastructure. When considering this resolution, and when considering the lens that I think T-DAC will use, which will be the manual. They gave us the rules. And, and it seems that both the school system's current package system is both in compliant, in compliance, and currently being served. So that would lead a reasonable person to conclude that it is not necessary, as, as indicated in page seven, of what it needs to be. So that's the intent of the grant. The second part is the financial. Uh, so first, in an effort to prioritize the money, the government actually did something pretty wise. Is they, they told all the utilities to basically, and, and I'm sure the T-DAC worked with them, to, to complete a scorecard. You know, where you at? You know, if I, if I think I need to lose weight, the first thing I need to do is hop on the scale, see what I weigh. That's what they did, is required them to complete a scorecard. So each utility had to complete the scorecard. The Hickman County School Board did not complete it because they're not a utility. Given this fact, a, a, a person within looked and say, okay, if they didn't complete a scorecard, how are they doing? So we can go to the inspection and understand if there's a significant non-compliance. In this case, that does not exist. Recent inspection found the facility in compliance. And the Hickman County School Board twenty-nineteen long-range facilities plan, which I have here, which probably some of you may have received, but I haven't, if you'd like to look at it. Um, this is the facility plan. The only thing that I could see in this long-range plan, this was, this was something that the taxpayer money paid for to have, is issues with East Hickman Elementary School. And it takes, talks about wastewater service, and it was rated poor. But that wasn't due to the package plant. That is due to the sewer connectivity within the school. When looking at the total dollars for this resolution, it equates to more than half of the grant total. Yet it does not meet the main goals and the priorities that I mentioned earlier, that they first state in this grant manual. This means that if the resolution is passed, it is very unlikely to be approved by a T-DAC. This would mean that our county would lose access to those funds and could jeopardize future competitive grants. I, I can't see where a reasonable person would say, well, you know, they, they turned down this one, and it's okay, but we'll, we'll apply for these competitive ones in the future. That just doesn't make sense. They're not going to approve those. I'm not sure that this is a risk that we should take. Secondly, due to the resolution being a collaboration, well, I guess that's changed now, uh, according to the amendments. But as it was originally stated, um, with it being a collaboration, on page twenty-eight and twenty-nine of the, uh, the manual, it states that any projects that are not completed on time may forfeit remaining grant, award dollars, or risk contract termination, and be required to remit funds back to the state. That means we gotta pay that money back, folks, if it doesn't get done by that time. Now, it was my understanding, when this was presented, was that this work would be done by the Water Authority of Dixon County. But it seems that that has changed to some degree, and I think the, um, sponsor had mentioned that this would be something that we would, would actually oversee. So, you know, some questions come, come about. How would we hold, if the Water Authority was going to do this work, how would we hold them accountable to that date? Because we know the consequences if they don't meet it. Are we willing to gamble the future tax dollars if this doesn't get completed in time? There's a lot of work that would have to be done. Easements are needed. You know, how's this project gonna be managed? That's not completely spelled out in this resolution, and to ensure that it's completed in time. And then, the all-important question of, why has the Water Authority of Dixon County turned down the request to hook others into the sewer system if they have this capacity? By not allocating the money to the central, it would point to negligence on our part of this community, our, this commission, it would point to negligence. It would make more sense to provide the money to the town to help ensure that our county receives the money, receives it, and to provide the resources to address needs that are greater than this project. The overwhelming, overwhelming voice that I heard in my district, from the people I represent, do not want this money to go to this project. They feel it is not a current need, and it's not within scope of the grant. I talked to Mayor Jacobs this, uh, morning, and he shared with me the scorecard. According to their scorecard for the, the water loss, production cost per year, they're losing one point six seven million dollars because of the water loss. Water loss numbers, when they, when they, we say fifty percent, I don't know what that means exactly. I know it is half of what you're producing, you're losing. But is that good or bad? I have no idea. When I talked to somebody else that I, I completely trust, they said, you know, fourteen percent loss is about where you wanna be. They're, whether they're at fifty-one, or forty-five, or thirty-six, if it's not, if, if the gut feeling is less, it's still more than what, what would be accepted. Couple more points. It's my understanding, after talking to Mackenzie, Mackenzie, for those that don't know, is the person that works for South Central. She's a lawyer, and she would be writing up this grant. According to what she told me, this, this line, and the way that this resolution is presented, would belong to the Water Authority of Dixon County. It would not belong to Hickman County. Obviously, you have easements. We don't, I mean, when those happen, that means that they're allowed to put that, those, that, uh, item on your property. I think there was, uh, mention of the, the, a desire to be on the sewer. I'm fortunate, because I was just on the school board for Hickman County. I served four years. There was discussion. There's no doubt about it. There was, I say, and I say very loosely, earmarked money for a sewer to help out if it was to take place. There was not a vote on the school board to allocate this money to this issue. Not a vote. To close, I've got a letter from a, an attorney, um, locally, that, that talks about some things to consider and to think about. This is from Jody Barrett. He is running for the state, uh, rep. And it says, I'm just gonna read some, some points, and you're welcome to get a copy of it. Clean, dependable wa, uh, drinking water is an absolute essential for human survival. It is number one on the list of priorities of any organized society. A little further down, diverting any funds from the repairs and operations of the system that provides clean, dependable drinking water to the citizens of Hickman County for any other purpose would be malpractice or at least gross net worth. He points to a article, uh, in regards to drinking water crisis throughout American cities and towns. And in the first, uh, line, it says, regarding events, the number of main water failures is estimated to be about eight hundred and fifty daily in North America. So you're welcome to a copy of it. I'm sure Casey's getting good at using the copy machine. And, uh, we can get you a copy of that, but, uh, a lot of things to consider, and, um, I'm just gonna yield my time to that.
We have on the floor Resolution twenty-two, excuse me.
Do you have on the floor Resolution twenty-two, excuse me, Resolution twenty-two thirty-four as amended? Is there any other discussion? With the, there's still one commissioner that wishes to speak.
I'll say this, there is no doubt that every single soul in this room cares about Hickman And, or at least, I may be naive to believe that, and wants what's best for the county as a whole. It seems to me that you wanna get as close to the head of the stream of whatever entity you're talking about as you can, to get as accurate information as you can. As Commissioner Moore said, she and I met with Mayor Jacobs several weeks ago in his office, and we discussed this fifty percent reported water loss. And as Commissioner Moore said, he said, there's no way that it's near that. He said, if it were that high, that there would be people far above the commissioner's pay grade who would be at his door, wouldn't answer. That's why there's that much water loss. He said, there's just, in his opinion, that there was no way, perhaps closer to twenty percent, less than thirty. I believe it was in the paper this past week, that perhaps used to say how much the pool situation factored into that. The pool lost a tremendous amount of water. Set that aside. Everybody sitting at these tables has an opinion, and really, it's one of two things, the money should either go to the complex of these schools or sewer, or it should go to Centerville. Commissioner Moore and I are the Centerville City Limit Representatives, and we absolutely, and this is why we went to Mayor Jacobs, we want to do what's best for our constituency. And if there's a significant water loss, we certainly want to. Given the money that we have already given Mayor Jacobs, he has well over two million dollars to address that issue. And he will, and he will do that, he was pickled to get it. I spoke with Superintendent Gilbert yesterday. I just wanted to know, what do you want? What do you think? And obviously, she's not gonna turn down this gift. Who would? None of us would. I asked her about the package plant, because I don't understand it, it's not what I do. And I said, is it causing problems? What's going on? So apparently, the thing is thirty-five, thirty-six years old. And she said that there are many parts in that plant that are obsolete. The works that have been used are necessary and imminent. I don't necessarily know that the situation in Centerville is as necessary, imminent, or emergent as the package plant, in that she says. Many of those parts are completely obsolete, and they have to literally fabricate those as they go to try to keep it going. That sounds pretty emergent to me. When you're talking about several thousand kids, and the desire for us to keep those schools open, is it gonna happen tomorrow? I don't know, probably not. But to me, it certainly sounds more imminent than not. Carla and I had the opportunity to meet with someone recently who has well over forty years' experience in wastewater management. Not too long ago, Kentucky and Tennessee are coupled together, and this person was voted as the wastewater whatever person of the year. Forty years. Forty years' experience. They said, package systems are hard to maintain compliance, especially with schools who have high flow during school sessions, down during summer and holidays. This up and down causes quicker rust and erosion. If you have a choice between a package system and a sewer, you should've been on sewer This is from someone who has four decades of experience in what we are discussing. And it makes sense to me to do this for those reasons. October the twentieth was Imagine a Day with No Water Day. There are over two million people in the United States who do not have access to clean drinking water and sanitation. And so regardless of what we do, I'm just thankful that we are in a situation where we can make sure that that's not us. Thank you.
Do you have on the floor Resolution twenty-two thirty-four as amended? Anybody else wanting to discuss this? Commissioner Mickerson?
I have a question. I'm a resident, so you can say it, but I'm not. I wouldn't know if several are gonna do what they said they're gonna do. I wouldn't know why a water utility goes to do what they said they're gonna do. What keeps us from getting home by noon?
So, in the Centerville agreement, there is MOU, and that is binding, if I understand correctly. In the resolution that we provided and approved on that special call meeting, it basically held Hickman County government, us sitting here, as blameless if, it basically put all that onus back on the town of Centerville, if I'm correct. As far as the Bonacqua utility, you are correct. And in the manual, the reason why Bonacqua utility was not held is because it is a collaborative agreement versus a non-collaborative. So, the Centerville was a non-collaborative, if I'm understanding correctly, and the Bonacqua utility is a collaborative, and I may have that vice versa, but that's what I understood based off of the manual.
Thank you for clarifying the difference. That's what I was asking, but I didn't know how to ask.
Any other discussions on twenty-two thirty-four as amended? Do you like to share, please?
I don't have any copies. Here we go. I don't envy the decisions that have to be made tonight. There was a county commissioner that was here a little bit ago, and I think she enjoyed her four years, and she was really upfront and said, I'm glad I'm not having to do this And I can understand that. I've got several things I'd like to say. Now, I think, and I hope that I have treated this issue through three meetings as fairly as I could. I've given everybody the opportunity to speak, I've given everybody the opportunity to put forth whatever they want. I have tried to conduct these meetings objectively, without bias. That bias is about to change. There's a whole lot of talk about, a whole lot of talk. You know, Miss Moore brought forward, you know, all these things in Hickman County Times back to March twenty twenty-one. I, listen, I can go back a lot farther than March twenty twenty-one, and so can Commissioner Clark. There's been lots of banter about this, but there's never been a vote. There's never even been a robust discussion until tonight. All of these committee meetings with ARCA money and TDEC money and all, there were no votes. There was no assumption that this is what we're gonna go do. And to represent that as a fact, that, well, this is what we were all, no, there was never a vote. In that committee, or on this body. So as if this was some headlong train that was bound for this direction, that is incorrect. This is the first night that we've had this discussion. There were some comments in all of this that we're going to do something consistent with, or pursuant with, how we did the forty-six line back in two thousand and two. That was this, we're gonna build it, we're gonna turn it over, they're gonna operate it, run it, which is the arrangement we have with the Water Authority on the existing I don't know if you've ever seen that document, that resolution. I can guarantee you that resolution wasn't three pages, and it had an inter-local agreement, multiple pages, that spelled out what everybody was gonna do, and what they weren't gonna do, who was liable, whose responsibility was here, who was gonna take over at this point. There was a tremendous amount of work to make that happen. This body, in its last regular meeting, did not take action on one of those resolutions because you wanted some similar documentation, that MOU. And we can parse words all day long, but I, the inter-local agreement that we signed in two thousand and two was that exact type of document that spelled out who's doing what, where, and when. It is woefully absent from this. Woefully absent. And with all due respect to the document they sent us, that doesn't cover. That's an idea, that's not a plan, it's certainly not an inter-local agreement, that two specific entities are gonna interact with. And those weren't even the notes I had prepared. W H Y. Small little word, easy little word, but it needs to be the word that we have in front of our heads, and in front of our thoughts, if we go forward and you vote with us. Why are we doing this? If I had come in here a year ago and said, I got a great idea, we'll take two and a half million dollars, and we're gonna take that package plant offline and run that sewer up the road, there'd be some lies. I know this group, there'd be some lies. Y'all would say, why are we doing that? So, if you had been around here for all these years, and heard all these discussions about the package plant, and had been even remotely paying attention, you would say, well, hey, it must be because of the capacity, Keith, right? It's a capacity, we started off with one school, now we got three, it's a capacity issue, that's what we're trying to address. And I'd have to say, no, no capacity problem. Then, since you were at some of those meetings, and been around here for a while, you'd have said, I bet you the problem is it's about to fall apart. It's old, and it's decrepit, and it needs to be done away with. I'd say, no, that's not the problem at all yet. Then you might say, you know, I keep hearing that TDEC, if it ever fails, they're not gonna, they're not gonna renew anything, they're not gonna work with us, those big, bad, and mean people at TDEC, if it ever fails, we're done. I'd actually say, no, that's not the problem either. Then you say, why are we doing this? Yes, we just got some money. We're just got some money, and we're laying around with it. You'd have laughed me out of this room. You would have run me out of here on a rail if I'd have made that kind of argument. But because somehow we got some free money, we don't even, we're not asking why. Let me answer the two most easy whys that are out there. I've had the privilege of serving the people of the fourth district for sixteen years. I don't know why I keep missing that. But my goal is to represent them. And they, like me, think that this is nothing short of a vehicle for the Water Authority to get further entrenched into the county. I'm against a sewer treatment facility, it's taking the majority of that waste from outside of this county, and bringing it here, and depositing the effluent of any tributary in this county. I think it's wrong. Folks I represent see that as a threat. The people behind us tonight are not here because they have something else to do at nine freaking o'clock on a Monday night in October. They're not here because they have no other concerns tonight. They're here because they have one concern is, and that's what's about to happen to this community. So why I oppose this is real easy, and I do oppose it. It's because I have a responsibility to represent them, they feel this, and I feel it. The second easy question is, why does the Water Authority want to do it? That's the easiest question of all. They have thousands of acres of available property, south of the interstate and north of the county line, owned by some of the most prominent people in Dixon, Tennessee, including Dixon County owns property in that corridor. They would love, they would love to develop it. It is one of their biggest desires. If you go back to the preliminary engineering report that was submitted in December two thousand and twenty-one, it talks about that. That's the reason. And they have a real problem with that interstate, and the pump station's on the other side. And yet, they still have all this land that these guys want to develop. And I mean, they want to develop it back. And all the way that sewer is gonna come is right down here. If you read the preliminary engineering report, if you even read this, their intentions are clear. They are, they are, unfortunately, sometimes, very transparent. But this is clear, this is exactly what they were gonna do. Now, there's commissioners here who've said a lot of things about sewer. I mean, I've had, you know, one commissioner tonight, and I don't mention names, but I think it's inappropriate for us to do that. Tell, I wanna run the sewer up this way, I wanna run sewer that way, I wanna, you know, the bottom line is, there's some commissioners here who want and desire, and I'm gonna call this a sprawling sewer system throughout all of these. You know, the school's not the goal, the sprawling sewer system is the goal, because it's good for them. Got a lot of developers, got a lot of contractors, got a lot of people that think that's what we should be doing. But are they representing the folks? Are they representing people from that district? One of the commissioners who sponsored this, I asked, I was trying to explain my case to him, and I said, you know, I'm opposed- And I said, "You know, I'm opposed to this because the folks in my district are opposed to this. We're scared of what the Water Authority is planning to do. We see this coming like a train and we don't want it." And he told me, "Well, you know what? The people in my district don't want it either." And yet his name's on the document. How can you sit there and say, "Folks in my district don't want it," but you put your name on it? Why? There was a group of commissioners, and I want to say this. You know, we've all heard these stories about the package plant for years. I have repeated some of the stories I've heard about the package plant. And until this came along, it was hard. I didn't know the truth. But after this started to come out, and I also say that in all of these discussions about, "Let's have to go do this, have to go..." It was always couched in, "This thing is about to fail." Always couched with that predicate. But after it came to light that it was about to fail, a group of us went, a group of us commissioners, trying to make some doggone good decisions, went to go see that package plant and to talk to that operator and see how it was going to work. We saw that. We saw the truth. We saw that it's not falling apart. We saw it's not on the imminent death leg. And when I went to talk to that commissioner after that about our experience there, he told me that little visit almost cost me my job. Whoa, almost cost me my job? Well, he's an employee of the school system. In fact, his wife's also a employee of the school system. The people in the district don't want it. All of a sudden, jobs are talking about... I'm wondering why people's names are on some of these signatures on this. And while I'm on the school system, you know, some of you have been talked to somebody in the school system and they've told you this. We never told you, we never told you that that system was failing. We never told you there was a capacity problem. We never told you that TDEC wasn't going to help us out if things went south. And you know what? It's wrong. I've never heard them say that, not in this group. They've been in the room when that lies been spreading. And they didn't straighten us out. They had numerous opportunities when folks would make those type of comments to say, "Wait a minute, let's make sure y'all really understand what's going on." And they never did. Not one single time. Why? Now, as far as I'm concerned, a liar and a deceiver is just different sides of the same piece of cloth. That's all they were doing. They were deceiving us by withholding the truth. But at the end of the day, yes, this is about whether we think running a sewer system from that four-way to that school has got unintended consequences, unintended consequence of ushering in a waste treatment facility into this county. Now, it's bear in mind that there's some people on this body that they're more unhappy with a sprawling sewer system and if that takes a sewer plant to go with it, so be it. But there seems to be a prevailing philosophy on some of the commissioners who believe that these two are not related. That you can have one and it doesn't make further risk of the other. Who's told you that? The guys who want the sprawling sewer plant, the sewer system? They don't care. The deceivers? I don't know who told y'all that or put that idea in your head. I guarantee you, these folks back here don't believe that. And I don't believe it. But it may be fair. It may be really super fair for you to sit there and say, "Keith, you've got a bias too. You don't want it. So you're trying to draw that connection." That passing 2234 isn't going to hurt our chances and our ability to stop the Water Authority of Dixon County from locating a waste treatment facility in this county, bringing in sewage from two other counties that they have failed to manage. And we're going to discharge it in one of our tributaries. You may say, "Keith, you've got a bias. Other people have biases." And I understand that. So I reached out to somebody I felt like had a pretty good grasp of this. And I got to put the glasses on. So I reached out to somebody that I felt like could answer a few of those questions. Commissioner Nash, you had posed three questions to me with regard to the proposed Resolution 2234. Let me answer each of those in turn. Here's my question, first one. From the TDEC perspective, would the passage of 2234 represent mixed, excuse me, mixed messages? The answer, yes. I believe it would send a very mixed message for several reasons. I believe the support of this resolution in saying you want to tie into the school system to the existing Water Authority Dixon County Sewer Plant would suggest that the county needs the Water Authority Dixon County. If this resolution passes and the school line project moves forward, when the Water Authority of Dixon County does its revised socio-economic benefits analysis, which it is required to do in support of their desire to have the Litt Creek Plant, it would likely point to the fact that the school system is tied to the Water Authority Dixon County system already to show local benefit in Hickman County. It would make Hickman County appear to be a bit hypocritical to say it does not want outside waste being discharged into the county when this school project, as currently planned, would send that waste back to the current Water Authority Dixon County plant for discharge into the county. Passing Resolution 2234 is going to send a very mixed message to TDEC about where we are in our opposition. We can put this little caveat in that Resolution LA long. But passing 2234 is sending the wrong message to TDEC. If, my second question, if Resolution 2234 fails, does this damage our reputation with TDEC? The answer, no. It would not harm your reputation or credibility with TDEC to oppose Resolution 2234. The current sewer plant is working just fine according to the most recent inspection report and conversations with TDEC. My third question. If Resolution 2234 is passed, this is the important one. Does it undermine our argument against the proposed water treatment facility? If Resolution 2234 is passed, does it undermine our argument? And some of you on this side of the room, y'all been sitting there saying, "We're against that. We're against that. We're against that." Does passing Resolution 2234 undermine that argument? Yes. Yes. I do believe that it would undermine the sincerity of the argument against the proposed Litt Creek Plant to also be in support of the school sewer project. Even if in support, you state that the support of this new Water Authority Dixon County project does not suggest support for the new plant. It makes the arguments less principled and much more about, "Just not in my backyard." You can't be against the Water Authority coming into this county and full Resolution 2234. You cannot be supportive of the people back here that you said you've been on their side and vote for 2234. It's one or the other, folks. And I know it's a tough call. It's a tough decision. Everything we do here has ramifications. Everything we do here has unintended consequences. But let's be clear. You can't have this both ways. You can't sit there and say, "I don't want them to come and put this facility in our county with the affluent going into that creek or the Duck River or wherever" and be for 2234. I mean, you could shake 2234. I've looked at it 15 different ways. Say, "Litt Creek's not on that document." Say, "Hickman's not in this document anywhere." But it permeates every aspect of it. Do not fool yourselves into thinking you can vote for 2234 and be against what they're wanting to do. Bear in mind, there are commissioners who are more than happy with everything the Water Authority wants to do. That's their goal. Who are you listening to? Bob Martino signed this document. He's the one who answered my questions. And just so you know who he is, for the entire Haslam administration as governor, he was the TDEC Commissioner. He was the TDEC Commissioner. He's looking at this and telling us, "You can't separate these two, folks. You cannot separate these two." Resolution 2234 does not need to be approved. Will you approve it? You might as well just go ahead and pave the way. Why? Why? If somebody told you they're going to break into your house and force their will on you, would you buy them a knife? Would you give them the flipping keys to your house? That's exactly what you are doing with 2234. Mr. Chairman, I call a question.
You want your chair back? I also want a question too. We need to vote. You got, he had his answer. Do you want to? You'll stay, okay. Yes, sir.
I asked this guy 15 minutes ago or 30 minutes ago to speak and he nodded at me like, "Yes, he would." So don't sit there and say that you treated everybody fairly because you have not. You have not asked me to vote. And our rules state that whenever somebody calls for the question, that's when you cut it off and you allow the vote. So why? Because that's what you wanted to sit there and talk about. You never called on me to speak and you referred to somebody that almost lost their job as because our mayor failed to call the superintendent and let him know that we were on the facilities. And I was present the day that you and several other commissioners was there and you took a container of fluid out of the... Mr. Picker took the container as it went into the creek. And you stuck your finger in it and then put it in your mouth. And you did. And I asked you again...
Mr. Thompson. Let's direct this towards the resolution.
I'm directing it just to statements that he has made. Now, you can shut me down, but I want to say what I...
Hey, I don't want to shut you down, but please have it on point with the resolution, please.
Okay. I'm answering the statement that you've made. And why did you do that? You proved the fact that the sewer plant in the east was okay. But the people sitting behind you, you said that the fluid is going to be just raw sewage going out into a creek. That's not the case. And I asked you to do it again and you said, "No, that was a one-time deal." But, Mr. Nash.
Well, let this be a lesson to you and how easy a commissioner can be fooled. Demonstration. This was the beaker. This is my finger. He never saw the Chevy Chase movie, I guess. He was fooled then, he's being fooled now. Don't let them fool you guys. 2234 needs to be defeated.
Question has been called. We are going to vote. Wrong call, though.
Bob Jellicoe.
No.
Clay Chest.
No.
Danny Clark.
Yeah.
Todd Collins.
Yes.
Steve Janockis.
No.
Destin Jordan.
No.
Ron Mayberry.
Yes.
Wally McHenry.
No.
Carla Moore.
Yes.
Ricky Murray.
Yes.
Keith Nash.
No.
Devin Picker.
Yes.
Wayne Thompson.
No.
Matthew Barnier.
Yes.
Seven yes, seven no?
Seven yes, seven no. Any commissioner wish to change his or her vote?
Seven yes.
Seven yes, seven no. Motion, please.
Resolution 2235 is a resolution for recommendations for decreasing the speed limit for highway, state highway in Hickman County.